I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Present.
Jones.
Here.
You have in your packet the October 21 regular minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
I'm moved we approved.
I'll second it. Roll call.
Jones.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Upstain.
Baker.
Yes.
In your packet you got an approved bills list and then there was an additional one on the table tonight. Are there any questions about any of the bills?
I have a couple of questions. We didn't see any, I'm sorry. Well, on the first one, Kent Midwest Tile, $79.30, 60 cents for catch basin lids and furnace coats. What are those for? Some were just for in stock. We also had to get some pipe and that was for... Well, our guys never put that stuff in.
Yeah, we do.
Quite.
I think we do quite a bit.
Oh.
Did one on Edison Street about a month ago, I recall.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I was trying to blank. But yeah, some of it was some 18-inch pipe and then some other stuff. But we keep slipping stock. Wastewater Treatment Plant, Republic Services, round number's 10 grand for a dumpster. That was another six, seven loads of sludge hauled out. And we still have the bladders? The one for sure is gone. I don't know if they got rid of the second one. And just a heads up, probably next meeting you're gonna get a bill for right around 20 grand. Well, you want this stuff gotten rid of or not? But this one's gonna be for Mike sanitation. I had them come in, so they sucked out about 100,000 gallons. So the one's totally empty, the big blue tanks. They've got the bubblers covered over with water for the winter. And the other ones should be down enough that we shouldn't have any problems with the winter and then they can still switch back and forth. But we're just getting rid of a lot of gunk. Okay. And TTL Associates, $7,500 for on the well field testing. That was finishing up their contract on the other bill that was a roundoff. It was like 18. They were gonna hold off on their final bill until they got the final report all finished up, which they're getting that's been a month and a half ago or whatever. That's the report that we already have? Yep. Okay. That closes them. And it's all over with now? No. All the preliminary testing. But that's all that we're gonna owe them up to date? Yeah. Those three companies are all done. Okay. Without seeing this one before, I guess I'll say pay the bills unless somebody else has anything.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Upstain.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have a notice of a public hearing to be held November 21 at
6:00 PM in the zoning office at 108 North Main Street. Bradley Guilford has submitted an application to request a lot split with a physical address of 232 East High Street. The request is to split .06 acres more or less, again, November 21. If you have an interest in that, please attend the meeting at the zoning inspector's office. You have in the packets CRA committee meeting minutes. Does anyone have any... Is there any discussion about that?
You had talked about in our business committee, you had talked about another business that you were trying to get on board with that. Did anything translate or...
There's nothing happening right now with anything that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
This is going very well. I'm a little surprised at people.
Yeah.
It's a great program.
Yep, it is. I think so too. I'm just trying to spread the word a lot about it to people. I see them doing some major things to their house. I'll try to stop by and talk to them and tell them about it. So then we'll go on down here. The finance committee met on October 27. You have the meeting, the minutes in front of you. Would anybody like to... Does anybody have anything to say about this meeting? Any discussion? We have in the packet police fire and EMS meeting from October 22 in the packets. Is there any discussion about this? Anything anybody'd like to add?
Only that, I don't know if it's for our approval, but we thought it'd be good to try it on a trial basis for a year at the 50% off and see how it goes. So did we bring that before council to vote on?
Mm-hmm.
Cheryl said it was already into the budget for next year. I don't know if you found anything else, right Scott?
No.
Okay. So this is just for the police department?
I did find out. It is, they do it year to year anyways.
Oh, it is?
Yes, so it's not...
So what is the cost for the first year?
It was half, was it? Don't quote me, it was like 2,500 bucks. It was a little less than that.
Yeah, 2,500, 2,600.
Could sound the backside of the minute.
I didn't know you guys were contacting Conrad, but I had to.
Well, I wanna thank Mike. Mike's the one that contacted me, emailed information to Mike.
And so that 50% they have the first year, as long as we stay with Ohio plan, the second year would be a 30% discount. Third year's a 30%. The fourth year is full price, but we get 1% off our insurance premium.
10% off.
Hmm, you told me 1%, is that what you will do? Yeah, so anyhow. Oh, so are you talking about...
Lexible, 10% off.
Yeah.
Not the change.
Not our liability insurance.
We get 1%.
Yeah.
So we're wondering if that would be a decrease with our liability being part of that program.
Until, like, four years?
Fourth year's, as long as we're still with Ohio plan, we'll get 1%.
That contract and everything they sent was such a... I could look at it.
All right. Are you gonna take that to a vote? Are you gonna give time to think?
I'd like to make a motion out there to accept it.
Right now?
For the trial for 50% off for one year to use Lexible.
I'll second it.
You'll second it, yeah.
Roll call.
Jones.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
Barth.
Yes.
Are there any other committees that have anything to report?
On last Thursday, the street light property sidewalk committee met. I don't have minutes out yet. I wonder if you guys have a chance to look over them until the next meeting. It deals with a parking spot, was asked if it can be turned handicap on the corner of North Maple and East High Street. And they voted, the committee voted two to zero, or two to one to not allow that as a handicap spot due to past practices. But I'll have all the minutes for you guys for the next meeting. And I'll actually probably email them out ahead of time so you guys get a couple of weeks to look them over. We also discussed signs in front of some of the businesses, for instance Subway that says no parking unless you're a Subway customer. And we've talked with Kent and Troy, that's actually illegal for them to do that. So we're talking about possibly having the business owners remove signs like that throughout the village that says that. But we wanna have full council support, so I'll send an email out to everyone and we'll bring it up in the next meeting.
I believe, Kent, did you share your email with everybody or just me that at the same time we should look at other locations?
Well, yeah, because there's one or two others that we had overlooked. And Troy did say a committee can't make any decision, it's gotta go through council.
Right.
So that's where, if you round up all these spots, do them out at one time so you're not having every...
They'll all be on the list.
...of his council meeting to handle a spot.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Are there any other committees that have anything to report? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to the administrator's report. Said you have no report. Did anything change?
I was just gonna bring up leaves and then I was gonna ask if anybody read the 60-page contract.
It's really only 55.
Why don't you give us the highlights?
It was pretty standard, but there are a couple of things you need to be aware of. This contract is just for the design through construction of one well plus the water line to the plant. It does not include any survey or easements. When I asked Pete about they goes, at this point, until they know where the water line's actually gonna run to and from, they don't know how many easements they're gonna need or the extent of the survey for those. So at some point, you're gonna have an amendment to this contract once they get the design lead out. So nobody's caught off guard. And then, like I said, you'll end up with one well out of this. The test well they'll dig will turn into the production well. So you're not getting two or three right off the bat. We're gonna do all three readings. That way if people have questions between now and the third reading, they can get with me and I'll pass them on to Pete and see what he answers.
So is this $140,000 worth approximately, what it says on the last page?
Yeah, $149,000.
Okay, all righty.
Are they taking care of all the paperwork and run around with the railroad? Oh, we'll have that bill. Yeah. Once they get laid out where the water line's gone, they'll have to supply. A bill for crossing in their 140, they're... Yeah. Is included in chasing them down and getting some type of a yes or no out of them? Yeah, 'cause they'll have to run the design plans past CSX. Right, right.
Plus, we'll have to pay for getting under there, right?
Oh, yeah, we'll pay CSX.
Sometimes that can be quite expensive.
Yeah, I think it costs 14 to go under North Main. So it might be about that, I guess, at least. Speaking of the railroad, have you talked to the lads on Musaargan lately? I talked to a worker... I talked to him today. A week, well, mine was a week ago when I saw they had the big, before they got the big crane in. And he said, "Well, I can't really tell you or you'd get fired." And I said, "Just tell me what's going on." Their holdup had been wait for this big crane to get in. He goes, "Once that gets here, they should be able to wrap stuff up in about two weeks." But he goes, "Don't hold into that." It came in first of last week or middle of last week. I talked to him the day they set that. It's a new thing that they're doing. When it's all in place, they're not replacing the, call it the north side, but the piece they put in there, when you look up, that's all you see is steel. And the rock lays on top of it. And then when they wanna raise or lower the track, they don't have to do anything. It's just, they just start shoving more stone under it with those machines to raise it or lower it. And I said, "You know why you're here? Why don't you run down there at the next block and raise that one up?" And he said, "That one is on the list." I said, "For when?" He said, "We're not going there," he said, "but it is on the list." So when I talked to him today, he said, "We oughta be outta here." He said, "Maybe open it up Friday." But he said, "Don't hold me to it and don't tell anybody I said that." So... I mean, I could not get through to anybody and order them forward. You might as well go to the moon. But, you know, they don't like to be quoted because that's not their... Yeah, yeah. They said they wanted to get the handrails finished and they gotta take their steps down. But the handrails, they were just finishing up the last handrail, so you might be right. It might be Friday.
Thank you.
And then, I guess on the leaves, we are outdoing those, so people don't need to call. They're to the point where we're not gonna be able to go around town twice at this point. So just get them out. We'll get them when we can. They do need to get out to the edge of the street. I had a conversation with a gentleman today that thought that's unfair. Why I guess getting them to the sidewalk doesn't count. And they still need to be the edge of the street. And we can't suck if your car's parked in front of them. So people on East Smith and West Cornelia especially, if you want your leaves sucked, you gotta get your cars or your neighbors' cars out of the way. No way around it. So most people are cooperating pretty good. Just a few of them.
Lot of leaves out today.
Yeah. Came down in a hurry, but we'll get them when we can.
Well, the guys are doing a great job on them.
Gotcha.
It's nice. Thanks for checking on that by a doctor on. Does anyone have any other questions for Kent about anything going on? Okay, thanks, Kent. We'll go on to the solicitor's report. I believe Cheryl's gonna read all this legislation for us tonight.
Ordinance 2019-15 and ordinance amending section 925.02 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to revise water rates. Ordinance 2019-16, second reading, and ordinance amending chapter 951 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio regarding refuse collection. Ordinance 2019-17, first reading, and ordinance establishing pay ranges for the village employees beginning January 1, 2020. First reading of ordinance 2019-18, the annual appropriations ordinance of the Hicksville Village, which would go into effect in 2020. Resolution 2019-13, first reading and authorization, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement and release with his enterprises incorporated. You do not want that to be an emergency, right?
Right.
First reading of resolution 2019-14, a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Defiance County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year 2020.
Are we having much of that happening these days? Are you, are we getting any?
There's one, yeah, there's one on the bills list tonight for $57.
But I haven't hardly seen any at all. Okay.
First reading of resolution 2019-15, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter a contract with Jones &amp; Henry Engineers Limited for design work and construction services related to the new village, well field, and associated improvements. That's
Ken, do you want that to go through your reading? Jones enter? Yeah. Yeah. We're not gonna start anything till first of the year anyway. Good.
And then I believe everybody got a written report from the solicitor on your desk tonight when he said he was not coming to the meeting, just to kinda update on you, all the issues hanging out there. Everybody had a chance to read it?
Number two is done. The attorney came and I signed that this week. Last two's done?
Okay.
And I'm assuming number five, in 2020, February 28, 2018.
And as far as number one goes, Ron Jones and I met with Tim Becker last week to discuss with him about his latest revolving loan. And that loan was to buy equipment, which he had planned to put into his expansion. That didn't happen after the fire happened and kinda setting back a little bit. But he got the equipment and it's in his building, he said, and he's using it. So our loan is being used for what it was set up for. So number one might be all taken care of also.
He's increased his employment, what, seven employees?
Yeah, he's up, what, 127 now?
No, not 100.
But it was 27. 27, okay. 27, big difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was, he was up more employees though. That was part of the agreement with his loan, so.
On number two, I thought that was all approved and agreed to and done, and just that he hadn't done the paperwork at Defiance.
They didn't have the, what did they, survey?
The Mylar, the plastic clear sheet that everybody has to sign.
The Mylar survey or something or other.
But it's still going through and it's okay.
Yeah, they were just waiting for signatures and I signed our part out last week.
Okay, we'll go on then. I assume, does anybody have anything else they need the solicitor to work on that you think of right now?
Oh, I have one thing. On the appropriations, since it's the first time some of you have seen it, it's been to the finance committee twice. But if you need a meeting or you wanna talk to a department head, let me know, 'cause we have two more readings to go on it.
Look it over, line by line, and see.
Yep.
Anything? Question on the general. Is that, I didn't have a chance to get to that part. Does that increase that sum, the general fund? It's gonna be...
It's about the same.
About the same. I mean, I haven't had a chance to really go through it, but I will.
If there's, I am chair on the committee, and if there's anything that anybody questions or have once, I know Diane's been a little bit disheartened that we haven't done it exactly like it does years before. But anything, anybody wants to question, let us know. We'll have a meeting with Cheryl and committee.
Great. Okay, we will go on to the department head report. Police chief?
Well, one is thanks for the trying the Lexible. By the way, we do get, once Troy gives me that contract back and we can sign it, we get two, three months. Sooner I get that contract too, then we get about two, three months of that. For the month of October, we had 406 calls for service. 201 of those out of the 406 were cases we worked. The next item is, and I talked to Cheryl about this, to see where our financial, where we stand. She said there is money there that I can, we'll be able to do this, is to purchase at least eight firearms, handguns for our office. Neither of my officer, including myself, carry a department issued weapon. The department issued weapons that they had was purchased in, I believe looking at the paperwork, in 2000. Nobody is carrying those. You can't, I couldn't even find a holster to order to carry one for it. And it's not the best gun in the first place. So I've reached out to Vance. I've gotten two different quotes from two different distributors. So I'm looking at purchasing at least eight firearms with a trade-in of those six firearms. And I believe I may have a seventh. I believe one of my part-time guys might be carrying one of those.
Well, aren't there like another eight or nine, 10 older guns out there someplace?
That's probably those guns. That were department issued guns. That's probably those guns.
Okay.
So there's some other firearms that are in there that was either forfeited to us or there's a 9mm rifle, I believe was maybe purchased way back when. So I did not talk to him specifically about trading any of those guns, but I may talk to him about that. 'Cause what we're missing is, is obviously department issued handguns. But we're also missing a patrol rifle for the third car. We're short one patrol rifle for that cruiser. So I've gotten quotes for those guns. I'm just gonna see where we stand financially before I decide to, after I make this purchase.
Those guns that have been forfeited, would you be allowed to trade them in or will those have to be sold at a public...
No, those will be traded.
They can be legally traded?
As long as they were ordered, that we could do with what we want with them, we could trade those. Okay? And I'll never sell guns at an auction in the first place. So I will use them for trade purposes only. So, but as long as the order stated that they were ordered for either destruction or us, or if they were specifically ordered to be destructed, then we wouldn't have to do that.
Right.
So what I plan on purchasing is eight guns, the holsters for the guns, and then the mag pouches that hold the magazines for the guns. The quote he gave me was, that he had me trade in eight guns, but there's actually only six, possibly seven. So if I trade in, if that's all I have is the six guns, the total cost for everything that we just purchased would be $3,067. If it's seven guns, it'll be $28.58. But once he said, I knew for sure he'll give me a final quote, what that's gonna be, and I'll ask him about these other guns. I talked about maybe trading that 9mm rifle. Maybe adding that to it also if they'll take it.
And that's for, how many, did you say, six or seven?
The trade-in.
But you will get new.
Eight.
Eight, I'm sorry.
And if I have money, I may purchase 10 because that way we have two extra. That way if something, knock on wood, that either repair-wise, we have to send a gun in, or if I have an officer involved shooting or something like that, we've got another gun to fall back on. But I'm not gonna make that decision, 'cause I know financially where we stand at for sure. That's the minimum I wanna do right now. So and the price that we're getting for these guns is a pretty good, pretty good price what they're giving them to.
What are you getting? Is your officer still train out there on Spencer Vale Road?
No, we go to Bryan.
Okay. I just hear a lot of shooting out there and it isn't for deer, but a lot of...
It's not for, no.
That's a private?
Police range over in Bryan.
Okay.
So and shoot. We're getting those at $409 apiece.
Now, what, what's the model?
Glock 45, 9mm. We're going back to 9mm. And the reason, one of the reasons is the 9mm is a good gun, less recoil, and ammo is a lot cheaper. I think it's about 30% cheaper than 40 caliber, so.
Did you happen to get a price from the ammo can out there?
No, 'cause they're not in Ohio. I don't think they can deal in, as far as the state bid on Ohio. But I didn't try, I didn't ask. I was going with the distributors that give us those guidelines for the state of Ohio.
So you're going through state purchasing? So you're going through state purchasing? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's through, it's what they can sell the state purchasing bid, so.
Did Chair, did Julie tell you, I called out there today asking for a couple reports?
Yeah, she told me you were coming out, but then I didn't, she never told me what you was, you were coming out for or looking for. She said she thought you, she was able to find whatever you need.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
So.
Any other, do you have anything else?
The second candidate that I wanted to hire, he declined the job offer. So I'm looking at another candidate, and, and we'll go from there for the second candidate to the other hire. The candidate, Roston Officer Becker, will start, I missed today, Monday, start Wednesday with us, so. I think that's it, unless you guys have questions for me?
So do we have any questions?
I just thought that, because we had interviewed those two officers at the same time with the positioning, I didn't know if there was a timeframe, if we had to go, you know, look, do advertising or something else, or still?
No, that was the thing we discussed with Troy.
Dr. Troy, okay. Right, right.
So I still have candidates out of that batch of applications that we didn't call, but for the interview, so.
Off of them?
So do you think you'll be doing, going back to the interview process then?
I'm hoping not after tomorrow.
Okay, all righty.
Yeah, if tomorrow doesn't work out, then yes, we'll be going back to the interview process.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
I'm gonna send an email instead of talking tonight, just about the seat.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Chief Kramer.
Getting wrapped up here at the end of the year, we got a lot of little things going on. Christmas kid applications are in the village office at Don's or the fire station. They must be turned in by December 9th, and pickup will be on December 16th. If you receive a letter, you're eligible for picking up toys. There's a drop box out front to put the letters in, the applications in.
Did you say the applications get picked up back here?
They have them back here and at the fire station.
And they return them to the box on the front?
House in front.
By the 9th?
By the 9th, yeah.
And they'll receive a letter sometime before the 16th?
Yep.
All right.
Pick their toys up.
Okay, and people can make donations, how?
They can make monetary donations, dropping off, probably at the fire station would be the best. Toy donations, there's barrels out in numerous places here in town. I don't off the top of my head exactly where I'm gonna go at. There's barrels drop toys in. And I think that's it on that. Sound right, Bill?
Pardon?
Does it sound right?
Having donuts is good anyway, you serve me.
We'll get, that's the end here, I'm done. This Saturday is the Feather Bingo at the station. The doors open at 4:00, bingo starts at 6:00. This is a family oriented deal, so there's no alcohol there. Veterans Dinner will be at the fire station November 11th. Our auxiliary will be taking care of serving the veterans at dinner. All veterans and spouses are invited. And the ladies would like to have, my wife wasn't available to be at the meeting yet, they'd like to have their first raffle, that they had the first one last year and was well attended and well liked. They'd like to have it at the station this year if possible. It'll be April 25th, and there will be alcohol at that one, so. It saves the blessing. When we had their first raffle for the fire department there, it was well, well received, and everybody liked having it there better.
Do we make a motion on it, or?
He probably would like that.
I make a motion, yeah.
Where, where do you want to hold it out?
At the fire station.
And where was it before?
It was at the Catholic church last year.
Oh, I see.
You want alcohol there?
Yeah.
For April 25th?
For April 25th, 2020.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call.
Maker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Massett?
Yes.
Thank you. And Saturday we had a donut sale, Red Angel was gracious enough to make donuts and donate them to Sal for Christmas for kids. And Corey, you wanna come up?
On behalf of John and I and Red Angel and all the people that bought donuts, we'd like to present this check for $525.
Well, thank you.
Again, thank you for everybody that came out and supported us. That's one thing, this town is a very supporting town no matter what.
Thank you for all that your department does and your auxiliary, they do work very hard for the community.
Yes, we do.
Real quick though, I got a question because, are you done? I'm sorry.
No, you have any questions for me?
The trick or treat.
Trick or treat.
Yes, we had, you guys did an awesome job, and I know the Eagles and churches and different things in town did a great job doing different things for the kids and the families. The rain, we ever thought about a rain date?
Some real sense of that, too.
Because I got a phone call.
I thought that too, before rain had.
I think they were inundated with phone calls, seeing as it canceled, are they gonna move it? And I got a phone call about 4:30 or four from a police officer, it was like, I'm not moving it, I'm not canceling it. I said, there was things going on at, you know, places, so some of them moved them inside, and I know the trunk or treats were moved inside, but I know some of the other communities had postponed it. And we, I don't remember ever doing that, but so maybe we should look into it.
I don't think we ever had.
That's part of it.
The problem is if we have a, a rain day, ours is set, and that's the only time we can do it for the, for the carnival, so you have to keep that in mind, too.
I think they're more worried about the trick or treat stuff.
Right.
Going outside in the rain and stuff, if, if the town trick or treating would have been moved to another day.
Well, there were some kids out there and it wasn't raining and they were having a fun time, and they weren't letting, letting that slow them down at all.
We had a bunch of them at the station, there was probably 300 or 300.
That's, that's the thing, there was, there was enough activities going around between the fire hall and the Eagles, and all the different places that had something, the churches, they didn't have to be out in the rain to get free, free candy.
Right, right.
I know the Catholic, the Catholic church moved their trunk or treat inside, so. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cap.
Do we have anyone here for the park? Okay.
Stop, Corey?
Yeah, yeah.
Corey? Does anyone have any questions for them for the park board? All righty.
You're all, you're all wintered in, right? Everything's?
We started, yeah.
Everything's blowed out, antifreeze'd and ready to go?
Well, they were mowing today.
Bag of leaves.
All right, well, we'll go on to the fiscal officer, oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna go to, Mark Young and Bob Gars is gonna take a few minutes and talk to us. One of you wants to come, or both of you, come to the podium and talk to us about the future and the past.
Indeed. Diane, thank you, and I wanna thank everybody for giving us a few moments of your time tonight. Bob and I are always grateful for that and listening to me ramble on. So a couple of things that we'd like to talk about. Firstly, we wanted to talk a little bit about Hoptoberfest this year, and Bob and I are fortunate enough to have the mayor, the mayor-elect come over to the brewery, I think it was last Monday, and have a short conversation with us about the event and how it went. And we're very, very grateful to say that it was an unqualified success. We had roughly over 1,000 people grace our doors from noon to midnight on the 12th of October, and they came from everywhere. We had people from Chicago, we had people from Cleveland, Indianapolis, Columbus, and of course Fort Wayne and Toledo, to say nothing of all the great communities in our surrounding area. We had people that actually had booked into the Miragold Inn just down the street from us purposely for the event. They actually were full up that night because of Hoptoberfest. We sold over 3,400 tickets to the brew house and dispatched 51 kegs of beer in 12 hours. We had a two-hour wait from beginning to end for food, and I think that Lupita's across the street was very grateful. We invited them over to our side of the street and I put them right in front of our, our front door, and they were serving, and you'll have to forgive my ignorance, I call them Mexican shish kebabs. That's essentially what they looked like, they looked delicious, I didn't get a chance to try them, but they ran out of food not once, but twice. So I, I would call that a win for them as a win for us because it took the little heat off of our kitchen, which was swamped the entire day. They did very well, and I think it was nice for two business owners to get together to help promote something that was for the greater of the entire community. Bob and I are always looking to be better, not only for ourselves, but looking to help make the community better as well, and we are already looking forward and planning for Hoptoberfest 2020. I think that's got a great ring to it. I have been working feverishly with a lot of the breweries who attended this year. We had seven breweries and two wineries. I put that in perspective, the year prior, we'd had a single brewery and a single winery. I'm very, very pleased to say that all seven of those breweries and those two wineries have already committed. We have not two bands like we did this year, but we have four bands already committed on the roster and the books for the entertainment. And it, it worked out very well. We didn't have any problems whatsoever. We had our staff of 18 people, plus myself and Bob, and 40 volunteers this year, and it was everything we could do to keep up. What we are proposing, what we are hoping, is we would like to take this event, this festival, this celebration of life to, to the street next year. What we are proposing, what we are hoping for, is to be able to close the street down. We want the event to still take place roughly the same time. We're thinking 11:00 in the morning to midnight next year, so it'd be the same timeframe. We are looking to do it a week earlier next year, so it would be the first weekend in October, in this case specifically October the 3rd. And I have spoke with Chief Kramer about this, and he and I are gonna work together so that obviously his event won't coincide with ours and vice versa. So we're essentially swapping weekends because we, we both have a mutual relationship to see both of those events do well. I think that there's, there's real potential here to metaphorically knock another one out of the park. We have the potential to bring and invite 20 breweries, as well as an additional winery, so the total would be 20 breweries and three wineries. And what we envision is an 80-foot wide circus tent, style circus tent that stretches from our curb to Lupita's curb. I, I think that there's real potential to bring in even more guests than the 1,000-plus people that we did this year. I can easily see 2,000 to 3,000 people coming into the village of Hicksville, not only to enjoy what Two Bandits has to offer, but I'm really hoping that they can see the best of the rest of the village and the rest of the businesses. We had quite a few businesses that came on board this year. We had one of the salons that actually participated. They purchased a keg of beer off of Two Bandits, and for the week prior, you booked a haircut, you booked getting your fingernails done, a perm, you got a glass of Two Bandits beer to enjoy while you were getting your hair done. And she reported to me that it was the busiest week that they had ever had. So we had All Travel bring up their tent and their car, and I know that they were very, very busy. We had Amanda Lee Coffee, they brought their trailer over and they were hopping from 8:00 in the morning, and remember, we didn't even open till 11:00, and they were hopping from 8:00 in the morning till roughly 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon. We had the Hicksville Daisies that set up shop right next to us, and they were selling baked goods. They were scheduled to be there till 6:00 in the evening, and they left at 4:00 because they ran out of baked goods. So it was, it was a very fruitful and it was a good thing for everybody that was involved. Bob and I are very, very excited about what that future could hold for all of us. Please remember that it isn't just about Two Bandits. I would be a liar if I said we're not in this for ourselves, of course we are, but I also wanna see things for the rest of the community. So when those people that are coming in from Chicago or they're coming in from Cleveland, they're gonna stop at the gas stations, they're gonna see that there are other restaurants, that we have some fantastic places to get pizza, that Jim Schmidt is there willing to sell them a car. So there's a lot of opportunities, and I think that it is a win for the entire community. So I, I'm really hoping that we can get the blessing of, of you folks to allow us to do that upfront this year coming. I think it's going to make a great event, an extraordinary event. So that's kind of what I'm looking for right there, that's what Bob and I are seeking. I understand it's a year out, but the planning and the logistics literally take that long. The first, the last year's was 10 months in the making, and this one, due to the size, is going to be a year in the making. I have been in talks with breweries in the Dayton area, has anyone ever heard of Warped Wing? It's a, it's one of the largest breweries in the Dayton area, and they are coming to Hicksville's Hoptoberfest. So it's getting some real traction, and it's getting a lot of excitement, not just here, but elsewhere. On a quick note, also, I'm very excited to say that Bob and I will start our canning venture within a week and a half, which literally means that by Thanksgiving, Two Bandits Brewing Company will have canned product for sale, not only in the brewery itself, but in a lot of the surrounding gas stations and beer caves and even some of the grocery stores. So we're very, we're very pleased and proud of that event as well. Does anybody have any questions? Is there any concerns? Is there comments? Is there anything that I can address or anything that I can answer?
I have one. What about the expense for like Kent's people to close the streets down and pick up the barricades and everything after that, and who'll be responsible, clean up whatever mess afterwards?
Okay, so I...
And would probably know more to cost into that.
People in the chamber used to shut stuff down, I mean, we never billed them for time. Now trash, since we don't have our own truck anymore, might be a different story, but you got a year to figure that out.
Right, and, and I, and I can't answer, you know, for that part of it, but I can't answer as far as the trash. I mean, we'll be very diligent in policing the area and making sure that when the event is over, that it doesn't look like the event ever took place. I mean, that's important to myself and to Bob. I mean, obviously if we had this event and afterwards, you know, it looked like Armageddon, well, it wouldn't bode well for us or for the community. And, you know, the most important thing that Bob and I have is, is our word and our reputation. So we would definitely make sure that that wasn't an issue. The tent company that I have been speaking to is Delphus Tent and Awning. Once again, Bob and I try to stay as local with everything that we do as possible, and they're the ones that supplied our tents this year. They were very, very professional. They did what they said, and they said what they did. So what I have been told is that literally at midnight, that they would be there to pull the tents, pull everything up, get it cleaned up, so that I would, I'm gonna guess that roughly about 1:00 in the morning, you would never know that the festival had happened.
And one other thing, John, when they had it last month, was that affect on your business?
As far as better or worse?
Yeah.
I don't think it really affected much way, one way or the other, because you closed
If you close the street off, I might as well shut the doors that day. Are you going to be willing to pay my bills for that day?
Well, first of all, we're not proposing closing the entire street off. What we're proposing is closing from approximately Willpower to the west. So theoretically...
Let me ask you this. Have you ever thought about not having it downtown, like at the park or some other place where you got more places to park? Instead of trying, how are you going to get that many people parked uptown where you can park them?
Sure. Well, there's an awful lot of parking that people aren't aware of, you know, obviously in the bank parking lots. There's large overflow parking lots behind the buildings that many people don't use or aren't aware of. As far as addressing about the park, we have to be careful. There's very specific places that we can and cannot serve alcohol. And the vision has always been about wanting it for the downtown. It's about a festival for the downtown. The park, while it's beautiful, is off the proverbial beaten path, whereas downtown is literally the hub of everything.
Yeah, and the park's off the proverbial beaten path. It's no farther, it's about two blocks away. If they're going to drive all the way from Cleveland to Hicksville, they ain't going to mind to drive three more blocks to get there.
Sure, but this is on the eighteen slash thirty-seven slash two roads, forty-nine, where everything converts it, and I think that was kind of the theory behind that.
Long ways to walk from the kitchen to the park though, John.
That's true.
Yeah.
And I thank you for that, Ron, and that's a valid point. And it isn't specifically just our kitchen that we're referring to either.
Right.
But the logic would be if all of those people are in town, they're going to need a place to eat, so wouldn't we have more businesses?
Maybe, maybe not. If they can't get to us...
It's walked down the sidewalk.
Okay, but what if they want to run up with their car and get something? If you close off the street, they can get there.
Right, so obviously, you know, Pollyanna, but to me, logically, all people in this small town, our restaurants...
I mean, I'm not telling one that said that they didn't like that yet. There's other businesses that said that they didn't like it, that they wanted to have stock off the street too. Because I didn't bring it up.
John, please bear in mind also that it, I mean, we literally would be landlocked. We would be blocked off far more than you would be. And I understand that you're talking about someone has to walk maybe half a block to go to your establishment. It would be no different than them walking that same half a block to our establishment.
But the difference is you don't do that much carryout. We depend on carryout.
So what happens when we have like the cars show uptown? And they block off, and you guys have your pizza and stuff set outside on the sidewalk, sell them by the slice, and it looks pretty busy. I mean, I don't know what the difference would be blocking off the road for that or blocking off for this.
And thank you, Eric, and that also is part of what I'm speaking about. Again, this isn't just specifically about Two Bandits. I mean, I'm really, truly hoping that you will get in on the spirit, and you will want to have a pizza cart out there, because I personally believe that you could do very well with it that day, considering the amount of traffic that we do attract, that we do bring in.
And you can't feed them all.
That's right. We simply can't. I mean, we had a two-hour wait, and that was from noon till midnight. And I know for a fact that a lot of those people understandably did not want to wait, and so they left. So if I can get all of my brothers and sisters in arms to put out a pizza way, or like Lupita's did, they brought out their grill, I know that they did very, very well, I think it's a win-win for everyone, not just for us. You know, Two Bandits handles all the logistics, you know, we do all the heavy lifting, we have our web mistress that takes care of all the Facebook postings, we're the ones that generate all the excitement that brings everybody in. Basically, you bring out your delicious pizza and stand back.
Same thing with like Amanda Lee Coffee, they brought a trailer in, but hopefully their business is up and open by that time down on the same square.
That's the hope, that's the hope, you know?
John, nothing goes better with pizza than beer.
I understand that.
So I mean, again, I mean, I want to stress and I want to emphasize, yes, we're doing this because we want to further our business. I would be a liar if I said differently. But I also want to stress and emphasize, this isn't just about Two Bandits. Bob and I have always envisioned this being a village festival, and those two words are key, village and festival.
I had a thought, just a thought. Have you ever thought about doing it on Main Street, right here?
Well, again, you know, I mean, I think there's something to the spectacle of having, there's something very classic and very Americana about having it where we are proposing to have it, because, you know, High Street is where the proverbial action is. And it isn't just for us, I mean, it's for the majority of the business owners.
Got to do it, you got to do it front of your business.
You have to go to Minster, I think the second weekend of October, they have Hoptoberfest there, and they block down the square, and they bring in like forty thousand people for those two days. And they have porta-pots, I mean, rows and rows of porta-pots, they got all the businesses, they got the Lion, I mean, the Veterans, all the Veterans Associations are also now they're selling food, fundraisers, classes are doing fundraisers and...
And Eric, I thank you for bringing that up, and that is, I think, something that is also very key. Is there, has anyone else ever been to that festival? I haven't personally, but I have quite a few of our brew crew members who do go. And this is not an exaggeration when I say in that two-day festival, that little town generates over a million dollars of revenue, all right? I don't know of anyone in this room that would deny in a single day envisioning three-quarters to a million dollars being invested into this community. I'm not saying that's going to happen next year, but I am saying that the festival in the two short years that we have personally hosted it, and it was the Hickstoberfest prior to that, so if you want to lump that in with this, we're saying in three years, it has literally tripled in size, okay? And the first year, it was ourselves and Lupita, and this year, we had five other businesses that were participating. And again, Bob and I envisioned the entire village getting in on the act, because I think that's what could really, really hit this home. And again, not next year, but within a four- or five-year period, I could literally see us challenging Minster for those kind of numbers. I really, truly do.
Are there any other questions for Bob? And if there's not, someone want to make a motion?
Or Mark.
Or I'm sorry. Or Bob?
It doesn't matter.
Sorry, Mark.
I don't have any for you, Bob.
Anything else that I can answer, or is there other questions? I mean, I think there's been some good ones.
I'll make that motion that we approve Hoptoberfest for next year.
And closing the downtown street for the day? I'll second it.
Do you think you ought to have the businesses vote on it or something? Maybe contact all the businesses and let them say what they say?
Is there a real hurry to have it voted on tonight?
No, let's just wait till next week to vote on it. I'll give John and the business people time.
Thanks, mate.
And be fair to everybody. And if there's, if next time there's not a roomful of business, downtown business owners sitting there saying, "I don't want this to happen," then we're going to vote it in.
Sounds good.
Can I say something?
Please, Dan.
I'll say this, you know, for Arc Solutions, Jim Schmidt, family of dealerships, and Sam's wife's Realty, we backed it this year, we're all about backing it stronger for even next year, because we envisioned this commitment to seeing this festival grow. The revenue that that can generate in a day's time for our village and the recognition is, I don't see a downside to it.
Okay. We will hold off on that.
Danny, you see where we're trying to be fair with our downtown business?
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
Give them the opportunity.
Just let you know that there was three businesses...
Oh, I know that the majority is behind the Bandits and the party, and we've got to be fair.
If I was a business owner uptown, I don't know why I wouldn't want to have three thousand people possibly walk in front of my business instead of, you know, a handful of them.
All right, well, we'll take that vote next week.
Time will tell.
Next council meeting, yep, two weeks.
Everyone, thank you for your time. So can I assume that we're meeting next week at this time?
Eleven, or the eighteen.
Okay. And would you please make sure it gets on the agenda, Cheryl? Thank you.
The fiscal officers report.
You have the fund status as of October thirty-first, the utility and income tax report for the month of November, October, sorry, and also the revolving loan. You have a list of the liquor licenses in Hicksville, and it has our percentage, thirty-five percent at the top. You have a copy of the MediaCom franchise fee for the third quarter. And lastly, have a letter from the Veterans Memorial Committee that's to the council.
Well, I think that we need to discuss the fact that the village council members received a letter that, and this is from the original Veterans Memorial Committee, brought to their attention that there's consideration being given to place a helicopter on the same grounds as the Hicksville Veterans Memorial. Whereas they respect the intentions of the request, they respectfully oppose such an action now or in the future. So that's what the letter that the village council received. And so I assume you all had a chance to read that letter since it was in your packet. Does anyone have any discussion on it? And as I said, it's a matter that we need to vote on.
I guess you might not do it unless you do, or you close to actually do it.
Right.
You proposed a few meetings back, but I guess they didn't formally pass, but you told them.
So we never voted on this?
No.
No. They just read it.
Had an idea.
Yeah, I agree with them.
I totally agree with what they have here too, because really just honoring just Marines.
I agree with them. I agree with the letter also, and I made the statement when Mike Brown talked about it, that that'd really be cool. And it would be cool, but not there.
Maybe not there, yeah.
Not there. But a helicopter would be cool. Just not there.
If anybody wants to see a copy of the letter, it will be available at Cheryl's office for any of this other stuff for that matter. Trying to understand my own notes that I made to myself.
There's not one, it's just blank.
I would like to have an evening to invite the board and commissions people that served on the boards and commissions to just invite them to a hour, hour and a half reception to thank them for the time that they spent on the boards and commissions for us. And I spoke to Mark about having at Two Bandits, about them serving some appetizers there, and just as a thank you. And I would hope, I mean, there's money in the budget for it, under my budget for whatever, but are you, I hope I can count on all of you being on board and coming and thanking everyone for their time that they spent on those committees. It's a Wednesday night, and does anyone, and I know, you know, this is right here, public and everything, but does anybody have any reason not to go with something like that or have a better idea of how to thank them?
Hey, it's great.
I think very much. You've sat on many boards and things over the years, and a lot of the people that aren't here tonight have sat on many boards and been at a lot of meetings with different people. I think it's a nice gesture for you.
Well, you know, those people, a lot of them have sat on those boards and commissions for years. And I tried to have something a couple of years ago, it was in the morning, and had about ten people show up, but I think maybe an evening reception might go a little better than a morning thing while people are at work, so...
Why you don't drink in the morning?
Well, maybe.
Are you talking about the ones that are going off this year?
I'm talking about all the ones that have served on, you know, the park board and the planning commission, the zoning board, all those...
Last maybe five years have been off.
Yeah, yeah. All those people that have gone to all those meetings and put in their time. Wednesday, November twentieth, like six to seven-thirty. And we'll get some invites sent out to those people and have some RSVPs come back so we know how many we're talking about, but... Oh, Cheryl, you're the only one that has that. I don't, I mean, I didn't bring it in here, but yes, I think that'd be... Mike Bailey's been talking to me about the fact that we have some openings. We announced that if anyone was interested in serving on the, we needed replacements for the zoning board of appeals, the planning commission, tree commission, housing, the CRA. So I got some responses from that after we've talked about it at council. And since Taylor Clepper's going to be coming on to council, we're going to replace him on the CRA housing committee, and we're going to replace him with Clay Keely. And Jim Seiler will be replaced with Larry Saunders. And Linda McMahon doesn't have time to serve. She respectfully asked to be replaced, but the planning commission needs to appoint that person. And then Ron Hard is going off the park board, and the name of Damian Porter came up. I don't know if, I don't know Damian Porter.
This from Cory.
Yeah, I mean, is, so, I mean, I don't know if you want to, I don't know how you want to, if you want to just put him on automatically without knowing him?
Oh, I know.
Okay, all right. So Ron Hard will be replaced by Damian Porter. Stuff is going to go off, and we'll talk to the school board about her replacement because she was appointed by the school board. And then for the zoning board of appeals, Glenn Bauer is going off, and Stan Stuckey is going off, or going on. Stan Stuckey's going on.
Did council ever, did you guys ever discuss combining those two, the zoning board of appeals and planning commission?
They used to be together, and we separated them because they were two different boards. They served different purposes.
A lengthy process to find people to get it all...
Isn't that true, Kent? They serve different purposes?
Yeah, I think we discussed this before.
That's a few months back.
If you wouldn't like the planning commission decision, they can appeal to the board of zoning appeals.
Same individuals.
It doesn't, it's probably rarely happened.
And it looks like we still have one opening on that. Ron Hard will go off. And then for the planning commission, Linda McMahon's going off, going to be replaced by Bobby Sen. Alan Hilbert's going off, going to be replaced by Brad Ori.
With Bob in charge of something.
The tree commission is going to have three empty spots, but Kent?
I might be one of them.
You're the only one left.
So anyway, I just want you to know how these replacements are going. If you have no questions about it, we'll just approve it the way it is right now. And then we'll still have a couple more spots to fill. As I told Ron Jones, I'm not trying to fill spots for him, I just want some, want it to go smoothly when the end of the year comes and...
After I get on maybe her bio quiz. So, yeah, I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah. Well, thank you to all these people that have served on boards and commissions because it's an important job, so... Someone want to make their motion to approve those changes?
I want to make a motion to approve changes as read.
I'll second.
We'll call.
Second.
Mike.
Baker?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I can say too. Election tomorrow.
There you go. Get out and vote.
Make a motion adjourned.
And the Christmas cruise through needs help with...
Volunteers.
Post soon, quickly. They're doing the parking lot for the cards and for the parking area, the drive-through, and they got hang flags, and they're looking for volunteers to help. We need mussels, fish. And they need, and they need people to sign up to work at different locations and stuff during the cruise through.
I think they'll find something for anybody.
So if you get a chance, you can go help them out, they would appreciate it. Is there anyone sitting out here that would like to bring anything up to council? It's nice to have you here tonight.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Pete, you got any questions? You've never been here this long.
Not under, not under this particular phase.
Okay, all right. Just checking.
I'll second, Eric.
Thank you.
Richway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Bassett?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Mayor?